And we have another roll call for Ms. Teresa Sholander to go ahead and specify roll call to make sure we didn't lose a member, I think.
Okay, I'm gonna begin roll call. Mayor Tara Sinkovich.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Tom Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Jaffe.
Here.
Councilmember Brian Vinson.
Here.
Councilmember Simeon White.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Fowler.
Here.
Hand roll call, or quorum is confirmed. Thank you, Secretary Teresa. So, we are going to be going into an executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551.001, the town council will recess into executive session, a closed meeting, to discuss the following. A, Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, a government body may not conduct a private consultation with its attorney except, one, when the governmental body seeks the advice of the, of its attorney about, A, pending or contemplated litigation, or B, a settlement offer, or two, on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body, under the Texas Rules of Disciplinary, Rules of Professional Conduct of the State Board of Texas, clearly defines conflicts with this chapter, reimbursement of electric franchise fees, nondisclosure agreement regarding electric franchise fees. So, you're welcome to hang around, and we have to go back, and we'll, the time right now is 7:56 PM. Two, we're on number two, consider and take action on any items from executive session. I believe, I don't think that we have, I think we need to go ahead and go on to number three and four.
Yeah, let's do three and four, we don't need two.
Say it, number three. On number two, we do have some citizens that have signed up. We're gonna, I think we can kinda cover everything that we need to on three and four, so we can combine that. I think there's overlap here. It's the same people, except for number three, there's more, so, is that acceptable to you? We don't really have an action on number two, that was just in case, but we'll just combine those, okay? So, on number three, consider and take action on a nondisclosure agreement with Farmers Electric Cooperative. Do we have a motion for that?
I can wish to accept. Are we gonna, are we gonna hear three?
We do have citizens that wanna talk about, citizens, Shelley Smith?
I do not need to discuss it at all.
It's a nondisclosure agreement with Farmers Electric Cooperative. They've asked us to sign that before we...
If you have an executive session, somebody gets elected to run, read the citizens, on your, on your, the, 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 the,[224.52]
Anyway. So any, I, so I guess we will have to, we, we, we can hear from our citizens. Shelley Smith? Patrick Smith? Robin?
Robin, follow 10658 County Road 2400. So, just curiosity, so roughly eighteen thousand as a whole. What is that breakdown for each person? How much are you gonna have to cut a check to for each person that that?
The high and the low, okay, the low is five cents. The high is, I was told, three hundred and sixty-five dollars. So none of it is over five hundred.
Okay. And so then I guess this, now that you know that the town has to be the one to pay it, that's gonna really play a factor in the new budget.
And I've been reworking the budget. I had a meeting with the attorneys yesterday morning, and so I've been reworking the budget. And the silver lining is, we get a quarter three payment tomorrow, which is about the same amount. It's about eighteen thousand.
But that's just kinda like paying, being, we're still sure.
Yes, it's a wash, but it, it, yes, it's a hu- huge impact on our little town. So.
And we'll already be starting the new year as of Saturday.
Yes, so in the, in the budget, I've reworked the numbers, and it's not as dire as it, as it may seem. Depending on, and I've asked our, I, well, that's a whole nother issue, but we'll get on the budget here in a little bit, but.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. Tracy Hibbs?
Tracy Hibbs, nine four four one, County Road twenty-four thirty-two. So, Encore, starting the October bill, will no longer be charging franchise fees to those citizens that are outside the city limits, correct?
I have not said that.
I didn't say you did.
And you're saying Encore?
I mean FEC.
Okay, just wanna, oh, so as of September first, as of September first.
Okay.
They do a quarterly payment, so it's September first.
All right, so I would ask the council, in all fairness, to the constituents that are being charged this fee, and to, for transparency purposes, and for fairness, and making the council look good, that these fees are paid quickly and expeditiously, because you wanna show good faith to your citizens.
And that's exactly why we have not tried to. Slow it down. We've tried to, we're trying to expedite it, because we agree with you.
And I, I'm gonna say, I appreciate y'all's effort in looking into this. I know that when I gave this information to y'all, I mean, nobody knew what they were looking at. And this is just proof, moving forward, that any kind of documentation that is sent out to the council, to other entities that are doing business with us and collecting taxes from constituents, that you look over their, look over them clearly, because the FEC agreement is right-of-way only. That's only eleven to thirty feet on each side of the power pole.
Mandy West?
Just as a, a point in closing on this before we do anything with it, the thing that we do not have in our possession, we have the map that was a misrepresentation of the town residents that should have been charged. We do not have the corrected map from FEC. So I just wanna allow that there is at least a possibility that even though we've sort of, in quotes, declared that this has been corrected for FEC poetry residents, there is at least a chance that somewhere in there, until we see their map and we can look over it and say we agree, that there could be a one-z, two-z. I don't think it's gonna be hundreds. I think it's gonna be very tiny, but just to know, because I don't want to come back to next meeting and ranting and raving for three minutes that we said. We didn't say, this is one hundred percent corrected. We believe it's maybe ninety-nine percent. That's Mike Jaffe's number, um, 'cause I'm gonna allow that there could be a one percent. Because again, another person at Farmers interpreted the map that we set the second time differently, based on some other information, and I'm gonna hope and pray that they did a good job, but there's a chance that they dropped some.
And as there's people who move in to the area, then it will change, and they'll need to, you know, update their, um, their maps. And so we have requested of our attorneys tonight to, to make sure that we see their rendition and their, and, you know, their rendering of that.
Okay, so having explained the circumstance with the NDA and our desire to get these reimbursements out to citizens quickly, we have been advised by legal counsel that we can go ahead and make a motion here, which I'm going to do, to empower Tara, Simeon, Tom, and Teresa to begin the reimbursement process immediately, based on receipt of the list from Farmers, which they will get in the morning as soon as we send the NDA. The lawyer will send us, our lawyers, the list, and they can begin in the next few days, hopefully, writing checks. We'd like to go ahead and close this out in this fiscal year, so that it doesn't burden next year. So to Tracy's point, we wanna make this happen. So I make that motion that we give authority to Tom, Simeon, Tara, and Teresa to receive that list under the NDA and begin issuing those checks with Tara's existing signature authority, up to five hundred dollars. She's gonna use that two hundred and forty-three times, but that's okay, because I'm giving her, in this motion, authorization to reimburse that entire amount, um, not to exceed seventeen thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-eight cents, hopefully. It could be off by a few pennies, but we'll come back when we're done with it and give the exact number.
And we will have to come back with an official resolution, I think, but, um, is there a second for that motion?
A second.
All right, there's been a motion, um, to, to allow the four of us and council here to receive that list and immediately begin the reimbursement process. And it was seconded by Fowler, all those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, number five. Consider and take action on selecting a town auditor for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year as required by state law. And the Brian Thomas quote, he originally had said, I mean, he, he was saying they don't do municipalities for less than ten thousand. That was pretty high. The Murray, Pascal, and Caperton, um, uh, we met with him, I think Teresa and I, and he, his kids had a game at the poetry school, and he, so he came by, and his, his quote was not to exceed, I believe, forty-two, forty-two fifty. We are required by the state law to have an auditor, and as we mentioned last time, we, um, the process is, I mean, a lot of the, a lot of those CPAs will even, don't do town audits, but, or they do much larger towns than ourselves, so it is, um, it's been, we went through, I think Teresa went through like four of them, trying to find someone who could actually do that. When I did meet with Kyle Caperton, um, I, I did get a, a sense that he, um, he cares, and he did, he, he, um, I think he has a, he would be a good working relationship with our town. He also, didn't you say he also audits, um, some Union Valley?
Yeah, Union Valley, Fruitville, Fruitdale, several others in the area that are small towns.
Okay.
Now, this is the same item as last week, just with the date corrected.
It is.
Yeah.
It's the same item as last week, so we have kinda talked this over quite a bit. But Robin, follow, Will, you wanna talk? Tracy Hibbs? Mandy West? Okay. All right, so all those in favor of, or do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
I moved that we use Murray, Pascal, and Caperton PC for our CPA for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year audit.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Vincent, a second by Anderson, all those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, number six. Consider and take action on the Hunt County project sheet HO4 for pothole repair. Now, Holly Creek Road, Four Post Road, and Gate Lane are actually in, not in Hunt County, so you can cross those out, but twenty-three, twenty-six, twenty-four fifty-eight, twenty-four forty-two, and twenty-four fifty-four R. And I did not receive anything until late this afternoon, um, so, um, Randy Straight did send me finally some information. He said it was gonna be like six big trucks of new asphalt at six fifty, uh, six hundred and fifty dollars for that asphalt. And, um, I believe that was thirty-nine hundred dollars. And I asked him why it was so much, because our last one wasn't near as much. He said, "Well, you guys want the sides, right?" So, he said there's a lot of, um, on some of the roads, there's some bad sides. And so he wanted to make sure that, you know, he addresses those, so.
If we don't address the sides fairly soon, we won't have centers.
You have a point. He says there's lots of raw edges, is how he, how he said it. So it's a thirty-nine.
Roads, why, did, did, why didn't he come back and fix twenty-four thirty after he bid that one incorrectly, correct, uh, fixed it?
Well, because we didn't specify on there that it was eight foot.
Looked at it, though. That's a twelve-foot hole that's nine inches deep. You can't miss it.
Well, no, I know you can't, but we didn't specify on there. That's what I'm saying, on a twelve-foot hole.
So where do we specify on this one that, that you need to do the edges of the road? You need to do every hole, including the twelve-foot holes.
Okay, so on our roads report, it says specify whether the three-foot or more? And so we didn't specify that there, and, and on the larger ones, if it's over three foot, he uses gravel normally. So, and I'm just saying, we should have specified if there was a larger hole, and I didn't do that drive-by on that, so.
And I'm not putting this off on you, but if he's went out and looked at these roads.
He didn't.
He's, well, he went out and looked at these.
He went out and looked at these.
He also went and looked at twenty-four thirty. Now I'm questioning his ability to assess a road for repair. I don't have to tell a county commissioner, I've got a twelve-foot hole in a road that needs to be repaired. It's in the center of the road. We're not even talking about the two foot of edges we're losing. So how do I know that he's assessed these correctly?
I think, so when you have a twelve-foot hole, it uses a lot more concrete asphalt. But I, okay, so on our sheet, we should, I feel like in, in being cooperative with our commissioner, we need to specify something like that, 'cause mostly on our road reports, we specify where it, there it's three foot or more. So we, we did discuss that. He said he would have to bring another, a gravel truck to fill in the hole, and then come back with the, with the, um, new asphalt, 'cause it just wastes your money, basically.
Okay, so I'm, I'm having a senior moment here, so we're talking about something that I don't have to look at.
And that's actually, yeah.
Yeah, neither do I.
Am I the only one that doesn't?
No.
No, he just, um, he presented this, this afternoon, so he's.
I mean, I'm all for getting our roads fixed, but I'd like to have detail.
Especially since we've had a, now, an issue with what he's done. I would like to make sure that he is specifying what we need to have done.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, and not, yeah, I would hope that we would convey that in a supportive way, 'cause he could, you know, I, one thing I've learned about living in the country is you don't wanna upset your county commissioner, or you'll end up with dirt in front of your house instead of pavement, so.
Now, I will say Randy, uh, Randy did, they did fix our culvert on twenty-four fifty-one, and that was something that he did. They've been working, it's been a six-month process because, a long process. So he's, I think he's been very, he's been trying to be very responsive to us, and I know, um, you know, I work with him more than any of you all, I believe. But, um, I think that, that one I did mention to him, and I'm assuming from your stance that it has not yet been remedied, but maybe we specify that as a fix on this new sheet. So the sheet has, like I said, I was waiting for his estimate, and, and I just, so we can skip this until next meeting if you'd like, and we can specify.
Review, so.
Yeah, I'm not gonna vote on something I can't see.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll specify that.
Imagine if you will.
Okay, so just wanna let you know that he is considering the raw edges, 'cause I did specify that, that we wanna, wanna get those raw edges. So, we're going to probably move that to next.
Yeah, no special meeting, next month.
Yeah, next month.
Regular meeting.
All right, so anyone I wanna talk about? This is Shelley Smith?
Shelley Smith, one eight seven three oh fifteen sixty-five. Okay, so the intersection between twenty-four fifty-two and twenty-four fifty-six, is that on this list?
No.
Okay, so that's the road where you fixed the culvert and downgraded the road from pavement to a, a rock, right at that corner? Are we gonna do the same on these other repairs? Are we downgrading the roads to rock roads?
About.
So they took the pavement and they ripped up the pavement?
Yeah, it's a, it's a rock, it's all rock in the corner now.
What was that corner again?
Uh, it is.
The twenty-four fifty-one is, he cleaned out the ditch because it floods every time, and so put in a new culvert.
Twenty-four fifty-two and twenty-four fifty-six, right as you come into Grande Verde.
Yes, he, so they, they replaced the culvert, but they had to do something different, because the telephone company, although I called them like at least six times, he called them multiple times, Brenda Guernsey called them multiple times, they didn't come out and move their little tower that's dysfunctional, I think. And so he had to work around that, and he put in a new culvert. But as far as the road changing, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Yeah, I don't think.
It used to be asphalt, now it's white rock.
And now it's white rock.
But I, but I wonder if that's 'cause they had to excavate and they just didn't recover it.
It hasn't been recovered.
It hasn't been finished.
Yeah, let's say yet.
It hasn't been finished.
Point is, the road is in lesser.
Yeah.
Bingo.
We didn't downgrade any roads.
I just, I just, I guess my concern is, on any of these other roads, are we downgrading those to rock roads?
No. I think what he, um, and that's not something that was specified as far as that, he's, he hasn't finished. He said he's gotta come back and finish the job on that.
Yeah.
Although for the record, Pottery Springs has asked if we would downgrade twenty-four twenty-six to a rock road. They would really appreciate that.
Shelley, so twenty-four fifty-four is listed, and I think that actual intersection is twenty-four fifty-four and twenty-four fifty-two.
Oh, did it?
Twenty-four, starts it. But regardless.
Oh, okay.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, so.
But you know the corner I'm talking about.
No, and, and it needs to be addressed in case he can't see the white rock that needs to be covered.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that intersection floods, unfortunately.
Okay, somebody.
Well, hopefully that will be better. So he was trying to fix, because I know Brit, uh, several have been complaining about that, and he is trying to address that.
Okay, so since we have a month to get the worksheet, can we add that?
Well, sure, I mean, I think he'll have that done before then, but if he doesn't, then we can.
Right, just make sure.
I don't wanna pay twice for it, though.
No.
Well, we haven't paid for that. He did that because he said that it should have been done before.
Twenty years ago.
It should have been done before, so he didn't charge, I mean, we weren't charged, we did not pay.
But that's been on his, his roads for a long time.
Yeah.
That didn't tear up since we've incorporated.
Yeah, so he said that was on him.
Okay.
So, all right, so Robin? Uh, Tracy Hibbs? Mandy West? All right, so I gather that if there's any other roads that you feel like need care between now and next meeting, I know that, um, we need also, and I did reach out to Kaufman County as well, and we're still waiting on that. So just want you to know, we are working on that, so please file a road report, um, and that helps us tremendously. I do spend a lot of time driving the roads to try and check it out, but we need your help, too. All right, so I think we'll just move this to next.
Move to table this until next meeting?
Yep. Okay, all those in favor?
There just needs to be a second.
A second.
All right, so we have a motion by Vincent, second by Jaffe, to move this to next meeting, next regular meeting. All those in favor? Okay, and that passes. All right, seven. Consider and take possible action on complaint by Citizens Chad and Mandy West of flooding on CR three twenty-three. So we received, um, I think some of you here were last meeting, we got presented some pictures last meeting, and then we had a, also a, an email from, um, Mandy West, and it says, "Good afternoon, um, gentlemen, I just wanted to follow up with you to provide all the pictures of our property on three twenty-three. After speaking with Terry Barber and sharing the pics with him, he informed me this is a town issue, not a Kaufman County issue. I'm under the impression that a hydro engineer should have been used with the change of elevation of the town hall site. Also, that a tank pond was filled in. I look forward to your plan of action on correcting the matter." So Councilmember Anderson did do some research on that. Do you wanna share what you found?
I guess, first thing is, um, there's a picture, one of the pictures that we were provided shows the culvert going underneath Longhorn, and the water was only about half-full of the culvert. It was flowing from our site through the culvert at Longhorn, down towards a larger culvert on three twenty-three. And what it indicates is the water was flowing, but it was not building up at the culvert that was at Longhorn. It was building up past there. Then when we looked there, past there, there's two different places where the water was overflowing the culvert. Today, after, and this is, of course, a month after the flood of August twenty-second, twenty-third, there was grass that was pretty high on the one culvert, and, um, two days later, the grass was cut, and so it looks like the culvert's open. So at least one of the two culverts that seemed to be building up water has, uh, at least been partially cleared. Don't know about inside the culvert, but at least the grass in the front. And of course, we don't know the condition, the twenty-second, twenty-third, but the, we do know is that the water was flowing past the culvert on Longhorn, and so it doesn't seem to be a problem on our new town hall site. It was the culverts, the two culverts past Longhorn that were not flowing, and that water was flowing over.
Hey, Tom, can I ask you a question? You're an engineer. So did you measure the size of Longhorn's culvert?
No.
Okay, so it appears to be a twenty-four inch culvert? Let's use that number.
I think it's twenty-six.
Okay, let's use twenty-four. And do you know the size of the other culverts?
No. I measured it on the way out, it's seventeen.
Seventeen.
The next one in line.
So, so for simple math, just to make illustration, do you think twice as much water can go through a twenty-four inch culvert as opposed to a twelve inch? That number's actually four times. It's exponential. So if we have a larger culvert that's letting water off that property, uh, and, and I'm with you, I don't, I don't know that we, cause, I'm just saying that the logic of that not being full is not logic for why it's backing up on the other ones.
Well, I didn't, I'm sorry, that's not what I implied. What I implied is, the water is not built up on the town of Ha, uh, Poetry's site. It's built, it's flowing past there, it's built up on the two culverts downstream from there, for whatever reason, whether they were plugged or undersized or what, we don't know.
Okay. So these pictures that, that Mandy sent, they, they appear to be the city hall that's flooded as well?
Well, but the road is not flooded.
It's from the ditch all the way to the new apron.
So, so.
Picture of the road's flood.
Okay. All right, so you're out of order. Okay, so, um, I will say, Aaron, I did call Aaron Conway of Kaufman County. He's the road supervisor. He said that the culverts are up to the homeowners to keep cleaned out.
That's funny, 'cause the county's the one that tells you what size culvert to put in.
They do, but you have to pay for it, and they tell you what size, so if it's undersized, it makes me wonder if they had a permit for that, if that's correct or not.
And, um, now, the reason I measured it on the way over is 'cause I, I did have, um, a culvert put in for my mother-in-law's house, which is just basically two lots down from here. The minimum size was fifteen inches. The one that is there, the smallest of the ones that are there, is seventeen inches. So it matches the, uh, the diameter. Uh, I don't think it matches the, the width, because the minimum we could get away with was twenty feet, and this one's less than twenty feet.
Well, that kinda brings up my question, is there a maximum? 'Cause if you, if the, no, the maximum width of culvert diameter.
They, they told us we could go up to twenty-four.
Okay.
It said fifteen to twenty-four.
'Cause I, I wanna make sure that we're, that the county didn't engineer that, and we're putting too much water too quickly. Even though that's not our property at Longhorn, it is now our easement, so, but yeah, if that allow you to go to twenty-four inches.
So Tara, since we mentioned Chad in the agenda item, can we give him an opportunity? I don't know if he wants to.
He, well, he is on, on the.
I think he should get a special position.
Yeah, special, he's like a expert witness. I mean, it's his agenda item. Since we named him, it's not anonymous, so.
Well, why is he named?
I don't know.
We didn't name anybody that complained about the sand pit. We kept it confidential.
Okay, you're gonna have to wear a mask.
All right, so Chad West would like to come up and speak?
And I don't think he should be subject to three minutes, 'cause this is his topic, apparently, so he should.
We can extend it.
Speak within a reasonable limit.
I, I guess my concern of it is here, too, is from a standpoint of, based off of the record, there was over twenty loads of dirt hauled into the town site. In addition with, an undisclosed amount of donated, uh, dirt was also brought in from Longhorn. On top of that, in the record, it states that Mr. Hall graded the property to specifically move water off of the property. You're going through a larger, uh, as Terry brought up, a larger culvert pipe. And I guess the issue of it is, is you're saying it's my responsibility. The issue I have is the liability, because I can go put in a twenty-four inch culvert pipe, but are you gonna be happy about it?
Yeah, there's a huge culvert between us, it'd be okay.
Well, but that means that all that water that was on my property will now be on yours.
No, it'll go down to that huge culvert across to Dave's property. He'd probably have a problem with it, though.
And, and that's my concern, is from a liability perspective, to fix the issue that I have, it'll ultimately end up affecting somebody else. And I made a note here that, uh, apparently we do fix culvert pipes for drainage issues and flooding. We just do it in Hunt County.
Well, so my understanding is, after talking with the supervisors and the commissioners, that if it's a special case, like, for instance, a widow who has no means to do that for herself, they'll, they'll make exception for that, because it can become a safety issue. But the homeowner is supposed to keep the culverts cleaned out.
You could see through the culvert. I checked it.
I, I looked when I measured it. You could see through.
Okay, so, but there, the pictures show quite a bit of debris in the front of the culvert.
So, grass growing in front of a culvert signifies debris?
Well, I mean.
I mean, otherwise, the only other debris would be in what would have come off of the town's property.
Well, I don't know that you can have a causal effect here necessarily, so, um.
I guess my research of looking at the Texas code is, is there should have been a hydro engineer study done on this to impact whether, to determine whether or not there would have been an impact, and that wasn't.
You're talking about a small little pond that overflowed within two or three minutes of any, any rainstorm.
We also filled in an eight-foot tank that used to be there to collect water.
An eight-foot tank? What are you talking about?
There was a tank on the property that was eight-foot deep.
Yeah, but it overflowed every rainstorm, anyway.
I'm not arguing the fact that the property there flooded. My argument is, is now that what used to back up onto that property is now flowing onto mine.
I don't think you can say that concisely, and I don't think you can definitively say that. Well, there's, we have some other data here that shows.
What other data do you have? Do you have a picture from January sixteenth, twenty-twenty? So how many inches of rain fell on January sixteenth of twenty-twenty? In July is when Longhorn put in the upsized culvert pipe. So I, I guess that's the question of it. There's a lot of different things that have happened. In addition, since then, you've added all the dirt, you've added the building, you've added draining, or gutters and downspouts to the building, to, that was brought up in the last meeting.
Okay, so that area has always flooded, so, so, and if your culvert is blocked with weeds and debris, I think it is up to the homeowner to clean that out regularly. And I know that this is a newer home for you, you have another home around the corner, and so I know you're not there, maybe.
You keep bringing that up, it's all my home.
Okay.
I don't get to be treated as a second-class citizen, because my house is on nine eighty-six.
But I, my point is, you may not be there as much.
I'm there every day. I feed the horses in the morning, feed them in the afternoon. There's five hundred and three foot of fence that I've been spending over there welding, painting, and putting up. It's my property, I spend plenty of time over there.
All right, so we have some other data, so, um, are you, is there anything else?
I'd like to hear the data.
All right, so we'll have to let others speak?
Well, Chad, I'm curious, just, and I'm not making any commitments in any way, but what, what are your expectations out of this interaction?
I just don't wanna have any liability. If I go ahead and fix the issue on my property, I don't wanna be held liable, and that's the reason why we contacted the county, that at the end of the day, I believe that there's additional floodwaters being dropped onto my property. If I address those, I'm just sending that down, so now I could be held liable for me directing that same amount of water.
Okay, so I'm trying to understand, so you're saying held liable for your driveway was the only one that was flooding, is my understanding?
No, Becky's was also flooding.
Who's, who's else?
The, between the, the town hall and their property is, is another owner's property.
So that one was also flooding?
That's the one that has the smaller.
So do they need to upsize? So do they need to upsize their culvert?
If it's always worked before, that, that's where I'm having the problem.
No, no, no.
It hasn't?
No.
It's been over the driveways multiple times? Not backed up in the ditch. Ditches are designed to back up and control waters from, but it's gone over the driveways multiple times.
It has been up into the, the field that is at the base of the, the town hall, and it has been at the, the bottom of the, the West property when it was owned by previous people.
Has it, has it ever looked like the pictures that Mandy sent to the council? It has.
Yes.
I mean, that's what, the culverts are meant to take the water away. I mean, that's their whole purpose. So it sounds like they need an upgrade from whoever, but, I mean, if that's not gonna be the solution, what would?
Now, the county will help if there isn't, he said that they, if their culvert needs a repair, they will help install that. I think the homeowner has to pay for it.
The county has told us that they will do nothing, that this is a town issue there.
Well, Aaron Conway said differently, that you, I mean, actually, people have asked me if we can have permits for culverts, but that's defaults to the county.
Yeah, I would wonder when they changed that policy.
Yeah, it defaults to the county.
Again, I did have my mother-in-law move in, you've, you've seen it.
And you had to get.
And I, the county, I paid for the culvert, but they came in and installed it, and they told me what I had to, to do to, you know, to meet their specifications, so.
So I'm hearing you're concerned.
I'm not saying that they, they're not telling you something that, different than they told me. I'm just saying, I wonder when they changed the policy.
So I'm hearing you say, Chad, that you're, you're willing to put a larger culvert under your driveway, but you're just, you're concerned that by, I guess that water's gonna flow anyway, whether it goes over your driveway or under.
But the, but the thing of it is, is that, is, is the way the law is written, if I put a larger culvert in, the, the water that I feel is coming off of the town's property onto my property. So if I try to address it, I'm sending that water onto another landowner.
You know, I've looked at that. Is it that, or, this is something I only started to think about now. We can't change where the water's flowing, but the quantity is that.
But you can't divert water, and that's the issue that I brought up, is that that area has always flooded, it's always been low, and when, the standard is reasonableness. And it's, would a reasonable person believe that after you bring in twenty loads of dirt, raise the elevation?
It wasn't twenty. We, we brought in like less than twenty.
Well, I mean, that's what I was asking, is, you, we're not diverting it, we're, it's gonna go down there anyways. It's just how much and when. Like, you're not asking to dig a trench, you know, through your property and the back instead of the front. It's just an upgrade to the already existent waterway.
But if you had a flood, had an area that flooded, and you changed that elevation, the amount of water that is now falling on that, you have a larger amount of water that is flowing down that area.
The same amount of water, because the ditch, before we started filling in, the, the pond was almost full, and then Kevin was pumping it out. So if we had done nothing, the pond was basically the same, so it's the same amount of water that would have flowed towards you.
You're not gonna have the same amount of water for the amount of surface area that you've raised the elevation for.
What I was asking is, I've only seen about the course of the water, like you were saying, the direction, making sure that you don't divert the water somewhere else. I haven't run across any laws that have to do with quantity. Maybe I'm missing something.
The, the law says you cannot divert your surface water onto another person's property.
Right, without their consent. Unless, if they want a pond, they might say.
So there's another property between your property and this, this property.
Between Longhorn Drive and the West property.
But I mean, if your culvert had been cleaned out, do you think that it would flow freely? Because it looks like to me that it's a culvert blockage.
I don't know that the grass in there was what was holding back the water.
Well, there was also debris.
I've looked at that, because there's been spots on the driveway that have now collapsed since we've had this issue.
Well, and if maybe it needs repairing.
And look through the culvert pipe, and there is visibly, you can see through it.
Okay. All right, so let's hear from some citizens.
Well, before, before we have Mr. West sit down, can, what is the suggested remedy?
I guess, I guess my issue of it is, is that when we talked to the county initially, they said that had this still been their responsibility, they would have come out and addressed it. And they told us that we needed to take it up with the town. If the town's not gonna do anything, then I'll have to, to deal with that.
How can we help?
I, I wonder, Tara and council, if it's reasonable that we maybe try to leverage whatever relationship we have with the county, to see if we can entice them to help him to install a larger, he's not asking for something for free, but let them be responsible for installing it, setting it, whatever. And then if it malfunctions, presumably it's on them, not on you, because they're the ones that engineered it. Because, because you're going and asking them, and they're saying no.
Correct.
Now, we, being the big town that we are, have a lot of muscle, so I'm thinking we can go back to them and say, hey, there's like three or four hundred dollars in road repairs on the line here.
So Chad, if I, if I may, I will do whatever I possibly can, and that's why I did reach out to Aaron. If, if, if there is a repair needed on that, if it needs to be up, upsized, then, like Councilmember Vincent said, normally they provide the permit for that, but if, if there's anything we can do to assist with that, if we need to come and, and assist, I mean, we're a lot of hands-on group. I mean, you're our neighbor, I feel like we could do that.
I would, I would definitely come help.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Shelley Smith?
Is it going to be our new policy now to name citizens who have complaints in the agenda minutes, the agenda?
I don't know. This was vetted by our attorney. She didn't have a problem with it.
So we've never named, we've never called anybody out personally before?
Well, he actually came forward last meeting, so it was already publicly disclosed. It wasn't like it was a secret before. He already had disclosed it himself in public on video before.
Mandy did not. Is this a new policy, then?
It's the same picture, Shelley.
It's, they are a married couple, and they did work together in this complaint, and we're just trying to address it.
Now, we can try to be more private if our citizens want it, because we were trying to, you know, just sort of the community, so I'd ask Mr. Chad, his thoughts on it, him being the only expert. I'm guessing you would have preferred it be anonymous. Am I right in that assumption?
I don't have a problem if you called my name up. My wife had, she sent an email, and I guess in the past, when there's been complaints, we've asked specifically to the county, and I suppose the, this confidential information.
Well, since.
Also, the email was not sent to you, so I don't want to worry you over.
Well, that sounds fair to me.
So the, the, because it was made public last time is the only reason that it was made public this time. So my apologies if you didn't want Mandy on there, but it was already public, and so I didn't think it would be an issue.
I think in the.
And our attorneys didn't think so either, so.
Yeah, I agree with Simeon. In the future, you should ask people's permission before you put their names out there. And another thing, I do distinctly remember in one of the meetings in here, and I don't remember which one, and I'm so sorry, and I tried to go back and look for it, but I didn't find it, where Mr. Sinkovich stood here and said how incredibly important the pond was on that lot, and how the water comes in and it swooshes around and stuff. So just as councilmen, go back and check, find that video.
Okay, Patrick Smith? Robin Followwell? Tracy Hibbs?
Who was overseeing? Tracy Hibbs?
Nine four four.
Nine four four one, County Road twenty-four thirty-two. Who is overseeing the dirt work at the Newtown Hall site?
I was there part of the time.
You were there part of the time? Did you ever look up the official site for the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality?
No.
Okay. That site is very informational. It would have given you all the information you needed when you put the town hall, the degrees of elevation for drainage and erosion and all that. I mean, there's maps on there, it's a free service, so probably in the future, you might want to look at stuff like that.
Can I get that name real quick?
TCU.
Oh, just TCU. Okay, that's good.
Chad McFarland, one nine eight five oh, FM nine eighty-six. Heard y'all talking about pictures where you, we're looking at the water level of, in the Longhorn culvert. I've got a picture here where the culvert is full, and the water's washing over the road at the Longhorn driveway, so we got a problem on that road. It's not just the ditches, it's washing over the road. So I will forward this picture to all y'all soon as I get cell service.
So do you know what date that was, or?
I can pull that out of my phone, but it was the same day as probably some of their pictures were taken, because in some of their pictures that they sent you might be ones that I actually took.
So that's the recent flood?
The recent.
The one last month?
It was the recent one.
August twenty-second, twenty-third?
Yeah, I know, I know Town Hall was, is there, I mean, because I took some pictures of the, the dirt washing off of the, that as well.
I mean, that's the only big rain we've had lately.
Yeah, I can, I'll, I'll pull the date out of my phone, I'm not seeing it right now, but, yeah, there's, like I said, that culvert for the Longhorn driveway was completely full, and the water was washing over the road at that driveway.
Okay. Do you know how far after the rain it was, or how many hours, or anything like that?
No, I, I mean.
Just curious.
It wasn't raining at the time that I took the picture.
We did have, I mean, I had flooding at the store, but.
Yeah, it's.
I mean, it was, it was after a long drought. We had five inches, like, in a really.
Yeah, and, and I've got low spots in my property where, because it was after a long drought, the waters, the, the ground soaked up the water, and I didn't get near the runoff that I normally get. So saying it was after a long drought, and we get this much runoff, is actually making, saying that the problem is worse.
The problem is pretty bad. I mean, I live on that road, so.
Yeah, no, and, and my wife walks on that road, I've just, and I've lived out here, you know, for forty years. That's, you know, there's a drainage issue there, and, and, you know, we've got a swamp, basically, right in front of the Town Hall, right by the road when it rains, so.
And I, I think the county did try to resolve it about four years ago, when they put in that, I think it's a thirty-six or forty-eight inch culvert. I mean, it's pretty big. I think they tried to solve it then, but it hasn't completely solved it.
So, but like I said, I'll send you these pictures and try to pull the date of when, of what I took them. I'm, I'm sure it's tagged in the phone, but, like I said, the water was going over the road at Longhorn, and then you can see it going over the road at the next driveway down.
Okay. Thanks, Chad. Kevin Sinkovich?
Kevin Sinkovich, one one zero nine zero, CR twenty-four hundred, Poetry. So, yeah, guys, I don't know a lot about many things, but I have a little bit of information on the, on, on this situation, so if you'll bear with me for a second.
You guys got those pictures here?
Yes.
All right, so you got, you got those pictures?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Let me have a look.
Okay, notice on, maybe we can figure out a couple of things here. First of all, I'd say shame on Kaufman. Kaufman, this is a problem that's been happening on this road for a long time. I've seen it flooding over those, over those driveways. It's incredible, for, for at least, you know, over the driveways at least four or five times. If you'll look in that first picture on the left-hand side, you're actually looking, and if you've studied the pictures that, that the West had sent, these pictures almost look exactly the same. The flooding, where the Town Hall area is, is almost exactly, I just looked at it for the first time a few minutes ago, they're like, almost exactly the same. If you're looking south down the road, which would be the picture on the left, you can see the flooding is going all the way down that way as well. Now, a couple of things to just clarify and point out here. These pictures were taken on January sixteen, twenty-twenty. Chad pointed that out, but notice also in the picture, there's no Town Hall there. Also notice in that picture, there's no Longhorn driveway there, and there's no Longhorn culvert there. There's still all the same flooding that we had in this picture right here. Also, note that, well, you should note that this was taken in January sixteen, twenty-twenty. The pond wasn't even built until April. I got, I got my receipt for that. It was built in April, I'm sorry, August. I got, I got.
Was it August?
Anyways, it was August twentieth of twenty-twenty. So the pond wasn't even built till eight months after this picture that looks just like that picture were taken. So, you know, there's a problem, and the problem is, all the water from nine eighty-six goes basically towards the south, from the center of the road of nine eighty-six. There's about a seventy to eighty acre recharge zone, and it all comes straight back, because all that land's sloping toward the south. It hit basic, hits basically the low spot, which would be, I mean, we get flooded out at the store like crazy. That little pond behind us is like a river. Poor Ms. Vickers, that's right next to us. I've seen a half a foot of water going down her driveway, and it just flows like crazy down through there. So, I mean, it's, it's a problem, and I do say shame on Kaufman, because it's been a problem, it's ongoing, but here's a couple of ideas, if you guys want to maybe look at ways we can, we can fix them.
And Kevin, can you tell about your expertise?
Actually, I'm not really an expert in anything, so. Well, I should have kept going.
He's modest.
Here, I'll get share.
Okay. So what, what's happening, I grew up in, in water my whole life, and I've been responsible for conservation, reclamation, just management of freshwater, freshwater compounds. So I've done this my whole life. In this particular such.
So he is a.
Do you want to know about the potential solve?
He is an expert in water.
He's an expert.
You know what, Tracy, you're out of order.
I'm out of order, you're out of order.
Okay. Tracy, if you don't refrain, I'm gonna have to ask you to leave.
I'm not going anywhere.
Just as we allowed.
I'm not going anywhere.
Okay, all right, so Tracy, you are out of order. I'm gonna have to ask you to leave, or you're gonna have to be escorted out.
Experts can be given additional time.
Experts can be given additional time. Tracy, you're out of line. As I was just saying, he's done water quality his entire life. His adult career has been water quality, so he is an expert. We've actually used him in the past in expertise on this area, so you must refrain, you must refrain. Thank you.
So culvert five there?
So, yeah, I'm looking at.
Are you sure that it's only twenty-six inch?
Oh, I think, yeah, culvert five's a big culvert. So culvert one is twenty-six, that's, that's the Longhorn one. Culvert two, that eighteen-inch one, is the next neighbor, Ms. Carter, I believe. The West is the, the third culvert, and the fourth culvert, and then that fifth culvert is the one that goes under the road. What, and, and Chad was absolutely right when he was speaking earlier. Each one of those culverts is a clean whistle all the way through. There's, there's no, no buildup within the culverts. But what I did see was on culvert number three, see that dirt pile that's right there? That's covering about maybe thirty percent of the mouth of that culvert. I'm not saying this is gonna fix the problem, but I'm saying that's part of the problem. There's about, I think if that dirt had been removed on culvert three, we could at least got a straight shot for the water, instead of swirling around and backing up right there to go straight through that clean culvert that's in number three. On number four, there is quite a bit of debris right there. It's a grass, Chad's also right, the grass is not gonna slow down, too much water going through there, but we still could clean that up a little bit. So, my, 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 just where I was going with this is, I think that there, if we clean those two culverts out, it probably won't solve it. The problem is the 70 or 80 acres of water that's coming down and hitting that area, but I am, I am happy to maybe get together the road crew, maybe get a tractor, see if we can get down there on, with Chad's permission, with the West's permission, get down there and maybe try to dig out a little bit in front of culvert number three, and maybe also in culvert number four, we can dig that out a little bit and see if we can improve the water flow that's going down through there. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you for your...
Tara, just as a point of order, because I respect the point made from the audience, I think we should probably be more mindful, because you're correct, I mean, we have the right to allow, but I think it's dangerous to designate on the fly somebody's an expert, because we can just sort of arbitrarily expand somebody's speaking time, and I don't think we want to do that. So, I think the difference would have been if we would have said, and Kevin Sinkovich has a solution, and we're going to hear from him as an expert, versus, okay, number three, Kevin, you want your three minutes. So, I think the point that was made was more a point of order than whether Kevin had expertise or anything else. I appreciate his thoughts, but I just don't want us to on the fly elevate somebody and say, okay, now we're going to call you an expert, you get 10 minutes.
So, when Chad was called, I was getting ready to call him as an expert, so that was pre-thought, but my apologies for not communicating that, because he is, he does have a degree in aquaculture, and he has dealt with water quality and conservation his entire career. So, and people call him from across the world to give their, give, you know, for him to give their expertise on that. So, my apologies for not communicating that from the get-go. And I, I'm glad to have, have someone who's come up with some sort of solution, and so that's what we want, right? We want to solve some problems. So, if we have a problem, let's address it, and, you know, but I think his point was, even before there was even a pond, it flooded, so...
Okay, so anybody else to speak?
That's it. Or Mandy West? I think she's not here. Okay.
Okay, so I think from all of that, there's no action on the part of the council at the moment, is there?
Well, Kevin had said that maybe getting the road crew out there to help clean up with Mr. West and with the West. You'll take care of it? Okay, then I don't think there's any action. But as your neighbor, though, if you would like some help, I would be happy to come over and help. Not as a member of the council, but just as your next-door neighbor.
Thank you. All right, so number eight, discuss and consider projected cost sheet for the Town Hall site improvements.
Can I add some point of order question? The next three agenda items, they discuss and consider, discuss and consider, discuss and consider. If these are non-action items, can we postpone these to another meeting? It's 10 o'clock.
Um, I, I'm sorry, but we've already postponed these, like...
Well, they're not action items, they say consider, they don't say take action, just like mine was last week.
Yeah, all we can do is talk about...
Just like my code of ethics was last week. So, why are we going?
That's true.
Waste our time if we can't take action on them.
I guess number 11 is the one that has an action item.
It's an action item.
That's right.
That's different.
All right, so we do have, on number eight, we do have, the projected sheet has been modified, so are there any, with the most current update being today, I guess the main things that we did find out that we had someone donate their labor for the installation of the meter base, so thank you very much.
So, does that mean we're not going to table these?
Yeah, can I make a motion to table these to the next meeting?
Well, let me just ask you a couple of quick questions since we can discuss, because I did, I was running through this sheet and I want to make sure we have all the...
It's about time, it's not the ability to discuss it, but go ahead.
That's true. I'll try to make this short, because we want to get all the cost ahead of time, et cetera, et cetera. We know people not wanting to piecemeal it. Are the water heater insulation in the attic, is that already figured in? Do you have a water heater for Town Hall?
The water heater, both water heaters are there.
All right, water heaters are installed. Insulation, do you have it in the attic? I know there was some discussion.
The insulation was donated. I personally installed one half of the attic, there's another half that has to be installed.
Great. And after the move, does it have to be re-inspected?
Yes, and Councilmember Anderson looked at that, and he got a price quote for $397.
That's correct, and I said I'd pay for it. Because I feel pretty strongly that it should be to cover us, is it should be inspected.
All right, great. Well, those are my only thoughts on it, just making sure we have all of our stuff, so we know what we're getting into.
Well, and can we, for this, for the vote on this, next time, can we put in some guesses, I guess, for the ones that we're waiting quote, if we don't have a quote, just round up, and, you know, if you think it's $2,000, maybe make it $300 or something.
We've been trying, yeah, we've been trying to get quotes, and as they come in, maybe fill them in on the sheet, so...
Yeah, Timmy, I'd just like to know order of magnitude. Is it $100? Is it $1,000? Is it $10,000? So, you could just...
Well, and again, if you know someone who is, you know, does some of these things, then please, you know, the council is welcome to solicit for some of those quotes as well, So, we have on this sheet, I don't know if all of you have seen that, so the current...
Point of order, I've made a motion to table it, either let it die because of the lack of a second, or let's vote on it.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
So, we have a motion to table this until next time, all the, and it's been seconded by...
Wait, didn't you say eight, nine, and 10, Terry?
We have to do them one at a time.
We have to do them in order, but we do want to discuss a little bit on seven, or excuse me, eight. So, there's a motion to move that till next meeting, and that's been seconded by White. All those in favor? Okay, and that passes to move. Okay, and then number nine, discuss and consider quotes to put selective soil over the sandy loam at the Town Hall site for erosion control.
Wait, are there any citizen comments? I don't think we went over eights.
If we table item, I think that goes to next time.
Okay. Just making sure. Don't want anybody missing out.
So, number nine...
Again, I'll move the table to the next meeting.
Second.
Okay. Number 10?
Let's vote on that.
Got a vote.
Okay. Number nine, okay, so do we have a motion? And that's been sent?
Terry motioned, I seconded.
Okay, so we have a motion by Fowler, seconded by Jaffe. All those in favor of moving that to next time? Okay, number 10?
All right, hold on before y'all table to move that. If you read what you gave us in the county, it clearly states down there, all quotes are good for 30 days.
We can't take action on it.
Oh, no, I just...
I understand, but we cannot take action on this agenda.
We have another quote that's, so, we have another quote on that one. So, number 10, discuss and consider quotes for septic installation. Finally, just yesterday, I think it was yesterday, I got a quote for $6,400 from CBD, using the Clearstring parts that we already have. So, that's our best one so far, just so you know.
You know, Tara, it's uncanny that this comes a couple of items after the flooding thing. I'm just imagining, where's that sewage going to go?
Exactly. This has been engineered, but now we have a flooding property. And when those sprinklers kick on...
Brian may want to get a water filter.
It's supposed to be potable, they say.
Well, the engineer was told that it does flood down there, and he put the, he put the, I mean, it has been engineered. So, and he is the engineer, James Adams, who is very proficient, from what I'm told.
So, he put it above the floodline?
He put it above the floodline. I promise. So...
Water runs downhill.
Well, he, he put it actually up on the, the sprinkler heads are actually up on the grassy part, or what will be a grassy part.
Is he probably, are they using an older system?
No, so Carl Crowe of CBD put in, just to explain, Carl...
We're breaking our law here.
There we are. So, so I actually want to present this, so the septic installation, Carl Crowe put in $6,400. He's the one that installed it at the Cap Ground Cemetery, and so we're going to take the Clearstring parts, the pumps, that we already have that are practically new, and apply it and just get a new tank. So, that's, that's what his quote is for, is $6,400 for that. All right, so, but I think, is there...
Terry, did you want to?
10.
We're already starting discussing that.
So, is there a citizen that wants to speak about that? Chad West? Did you want to speak on that? Robin? Okay. Tracy?
When you were, when you were filling in the dirt and all that, were any grades shot on that piece of property?
Okay, our topic on number 10 is septic installation at the Town Hall site.
Yes, I know that.
Yes, there were grades shot.
Okay, and where can we get those?
When they shoot the grade, they use a laser, they don't necessarily...
Yeah, but there should be a report.
We have an engineer's report on the, the septic engineer for the, this is number 10, we have a septic engineer, you're welcome to...
For the whole property, do you have grade shot?
We're welcome to see it. He got the survey.
Our grade shot for the whole piece of property?
We have a survey that was...
That's different. Grades.
Okay, and we have a septic engineer's report.
Which shows the flow, and all that of the water, where the septic will be and all that. Are there grade shot? Yes or no?
I don't have anything written necessarily. I have a septic engineer's report that shows, it shows where the sprinklers should be, where the...
So, the answer is no, you don't have grade shot for a piece of property.
So, are you an expert in this?
My what?
Are you an expert in engineering of grades?
I know about properties.
Okay, are you an expert in that?
What does that have to do with anything? I asked you if grades were shot on the piece of property, where Town Hall sits, where the septic is going to be.
Okay, and we have an engineer's report. All right, thank you, Tracy. Kevin Sinkovich? Mandy West?
I don't care.
All right, that's all our citizens' comments. Do we have a motion on this?
That's it, that's all.
I know, but you're going to table it to next meeting.
To table item 10 to the next meeting.
Why are we, we...
Because we have to talk about it at the next meeting.
Because it doesn't say take action, it says discuss.
Right, so we've discussed, we've considered.
Now, we can consider the quotes for septic installation.
Do you have them in? I don't have them.
They were sent out.
But look, Terry's point is, is this is getting late, and it's ridiculous. We need to cut things off and not carry things so late, and I think that's his point.
If you, if you would like to do that, then make the motion.
I think Terry made the motion, and I...
Not on this one.
Not on, not on this one. We had to take one.
Okay, I make a motion, we table number 10, I'll sort them next time.
Okay, all right, we have a motion. Thank you for that motion. We have a motion by Anderson and seconded by Jaffe to move this to next meeting. All those in favor? Thank you, and that passes. All right, number 11, consider and take action on an updated proposal, proposed fiscal year 2022-23 budget as discussed in the public hearing. So, we, because of the news of the week...
So, to be clear, Tara, this is our next fiscal year.
So, I will, so I'm working from budget number five.
Sorry, sorry.
I have four.
Yeah, I have four.
So, because, remember, I... So, do you...
I printed four out of the packet, so I wouldn't...
Teresa, do you have, we had, because of the meeting that we had with our attorneys yesterday, we had to revise some things, so, and we want to have the most current, up-to-date information.
No, I didn't, I didn't print anything today, so...
So, I...
Okay, I'll look at Tom.
Okay, so, all right, Teresa, can you allow them to see your copy, please, of number five?
I don't have a copy of the budget. Of the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have a copy.
Do you have it in the packet?
Not in the packets.
Yeah, I didn't print anything.
Let us take pictures, we just want something to...
I have, let's show you what I have, so I'm overlooking it.
We had a meeting with our council yesterday.
Going to take a picture for the night, though.
Yeah.
That's what we're doing now.
What else, Timmy? We had something else not in our packet.
And that's right.
There's a few things not in this packet.
Well, we revise the budget in front of us all the time.
But now we have the road thing, we didn't have the road thing either.
So, so last time we discussed about having, where were you going to put the excess from last year? So, I did consult the city manager of Talty, as well as Kyle Caperton, who is a municipal attorney, a municipal accountant, and he said you do not have to have another account, another bank account, you just basically show your revenue as a use of prior year excess. And so, with our best calculations at this point, we have $29,397.67 in prior year excess. Now, that is with the outstanding checks removed, so...
Does that include or exclude the payment for reimbursements?
That is including the payment for reimbursements, and the reason that works out is because we are due to get tomorrow the, around the same amount that we will be dispersing to citizens. So, that kind of works out that way.
So, we would have had a higher carryover, as much as you're saying?
We would have had a higher carryover.
Okay.
Yes. So, it, the only other change on here, you know, we had talked about, we, all of this, we went through thoroughly last time, so I did, I have in bold, the membership professional fees, $1,500, we had to add that, and the survey mapping engineer, I just changed the designation, we just had survey and engineering, so I added mapping, because that's kind of part of that, it just wasn't on here that way, and increased that to $3,500. The attorney had said, Attorney Messer had said that we may want, especially with the planning and zoning and all that, they're going to need more, more money for that, allotted for that. Everything else, let's see, the rainy day fund was, of course, what we put in to kind of justify, or, you know, balance it. For the new capital building site improvement, with the spreadsheet that the council members do have, we have about $11,000 more, if you include the septic, the 6,400, and then the gravel parking lot, we have about $11,000 that we know we need to spend. So, that leaves about approximately $4,000 for miscellaneous expenditures on that. So, the new capital building site improvement, I put $15,000 on that. The rainy day fund, then, that moves that to $9,712.33. But everything else is pretty much the same. Yeah, so we had to, you know, we knew that we were having to tweak it because of the, we weren't sure, you know, as a municipality with the accounting system, and I, so with this, this is an Excel spreadsheet, with our QuickBooks, it automatically takes that year-end and puts it under net, is a term, it adjusts for that, so, but with our disbursements, like I said, it, it pretty much evens out. We'll know, we are getting another encore dispersment this week by Friday, so that also would count in the year's end, and that also helped. It was a little higher because utility bills were higher, so it was around, it was over $6,000, which our average is around $5,000, so it was higher.
So, Tara, last, last time we talked about this, we didn't know the amount of the FEC overcharge. Is this number, Terry, is that reduced enough to allow for the smaller take on the FEC?
So, I'm, that's what I was calculating.
Because you guessed, you guessed the closest, like 20% or something?
Okay, so I have this...
What are, what are you estimating FEC is going to give us annually?
So, I have a worksheet for you all as well.
Both of them together is $56,000.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. A worksheet that kind of shows all that, too.
Well, Mike, if we use $18,000, that we think we're going to receive quarter one, or quarter three, right? Which it should be high, but if we multiply that times four, it's $72,000. Now, if we reduce, which that's a, maybe we should multiply that times, let's say 9.9. That's 64.8, but now we need to reduce that by $24,000 if we're writing them a check back for 17 and some change.
Okay, so I have the calculations here before you on the spreadsheet. So, if you look at FEC revenue on November 21st, that was just like one month worth, it was 33, or 3,306, and then quarter one was 14.6. I'm going to abbreviate just for simplicity, quarter two was 13.3, quarter three was 17.1, And then you do the 10-month total, that's $48,495. And that averages per month 48, 49. So the old projection was around $58,195. Then, so if you do the reimbursement, we have that reimbursement there of $17,824.48 over 10 months. Then, and you subtract from that original projection, the $21,000 going forward, because we're gonna have less, it's gonna be less per quarter. So our quarter equivalent's only about $9,200. So that's the equivalent of $36,806 annually now. And we're rounding down to, I just rounded down to $36,000 for ease. And then Encore, we have that one rounded down, is $21,000 is the estimate on that. We're rounding down to $20,000, so our total new projection, I have it $56,000.
Yeah, there's a way easier way to get to that. Take your three quarters, divide it by three, multiply it times four.
That's what I did.
And then take out $24,000, because we're gonna owe them 18 over three quarters. It's 36,250. So you got 36,806. Yeah, that was... So my question was about Encore, though. What... What percentage do we feel safe as far as what might be being overcharged in Encore?
Well, she's, you know, she's allowed a little under 10%.
Is that safe, though, if we just realize the 20%?
Well, the problem with Hunt County is a lot of the homes are back in the woods. With Kaufman, more of them are up closer to the front of the property. So we, it is an unknown. And until, like, until we hear definitively from them, they were given the shape files the same day. So about a month ago, they were given the shape files the same as FEC. So we did come off of that about 10% though.
Okay, so... So if I'm reading your chart right, Encore's quarterly payments, at least one of them here is $6,500. That's a Q3.
That's the...
Down below the half here.
Right, that's the one that will be deposited year-end. So this is showing, our year, fiscal year ends on Friday. So that's showing that we're gonna have, we have the current bank balance, less the outstanding checks, $32,000. If you subtract the FEC payment and, and, or, I'm sorry, you add the FEC payment that they're adding in, that'll be by tomorrow. That check, they already said, will be cut by tomorrow. Then Encore does an ACH, that'll, they said that'll hit on or before 9:30. That's 6,491. So that's a total in our bank account of $56,222.15 minus the reimbursements of $17,800, and that equals the 38,397.
But before Encore does any corrections for overcharges or inappropriate charges, we're running about $6,500 a quarter with them? So $26,000?
Um, that, you can't, it was a, it was a hot summer, so I had only estimated about $5,000, so...
Okay, so $20,000 from Encore.
Mm-hmm, that's why I kind of rounded down to $20,000 from them, which is up in that corner there.
Okay, and then 36 from...
Now, now really, the unknown, that I have, this has been a source of frustration. The unknown is we still don't have an invoice from our attorneys. I've asked repeatedly. So I put this at, at, or what our budget was, that was $1,800 a month. And so I did hear from Andy finally, and he said he's working on it. He'll have it in a few days. So I told him I, I, that doesn't help me. So... So I just put it at what they have charged us in the past, so maybe they will continue to do so, but we don't know for sure. So I just put $9,000 for attorney's fees, and so that, then that's where I come up with that. Now, that use of prior year excess could change depending on once, if we get that attorney invoice in, it would come out of, out of there, because I'll get it this, he said he would have it in a couple days, so...
So we're getting the invoices in the mail? I mean, that's...
This is, it's been a source of frustration.
Yeah.
I will tell you. Yes.
Not just for you?
Yes.
Okay.
We're doing the best we have with what we...
But look, it's not a, it's not a matter of just printing off their time sheets.
It's not.
They're doing adjustments. So I think we need to let them do their adjustments.
Well, we do, but we don't want to get too far out of time, because we could have a huge obligation.
True, but the easy one would just be to print off the time sheets and send us a bill.
Yeah, well, we gotta figure that out going forward, because that's a scary world to live in.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have, those who want to speak on this, item Shelley Smith? Chat, Patrick Smith? Chad West? Robin, follow along?
0658 County Road 24. So the last time when y'all went over the budget, we were provided a copy of that. We don't have that this time. Is there a reason why we don't have the revised budget?
We didn't have it.
Yeah. Exactly. That's... How are you gonna vote on it when you just now got it?
Well, we sent that out this, but again, we had to, we had, the, the news, the recent news, we had to adjust that to be able to get the year-end, so it is, I mean, we had to adjust according to the FEC news that we just got.
Here, I can, I can also tell you what changed. I just wrote down. It's just a few things from budget. Four to five. Would you like me to read them out?
Well, she kind of went over it, but I mean, last night it was nice to be able to compare. And then we got this other budget sheet of the Town Hall remodel, and it went up by 50-something thousand dollars from the last one. So that we were able to provide, we were able to get that shocker, but not the other. So I mean, it's just kind of crazy how we get this sheet, now it's went up by $50,000. I mean, it's just money, right? It's just our money. It's just going down.
So what went up by $50,000? The value?
The, the little paper that she gave us over here about... Last time.
That was because of the insurance. The insurance valued the building at $165,000. That's why it went up. So we're trying to give you as updated information as possible.
They valued that, that little white building that much?
Because replacement cost is at $150 per square foot now, and now it's crazy. And so that actually came from a builder among us, so... And originally, we had it valued much less for replacement cost.
Let me tell you what, $150 isn't too expensive for buildings. I mean, there's a lot of 200-square-foot buildings around here now.
I guess, just for me, and I guess this is my stupidity part on all of, all of it, and I know I came in way late on all these council meetings, but when I thought the building was being moved, I thought the whole thing was being moved, and you were given that price for that, not that small section. I deal with home build, I, I'm just blown away that that much for that little spot, when we could build, a metal building could have been done.
Now, that's the value that we, so the town's value.
I know, but what it's gonna cost for us to remodel that little thing.
It's already been remodeled. It's already mostly done. The only thing we have left to do is about...
Talking about...
$11,000.
What was put into it. We could have had something bigger. It's just, it's a huge disappointment to me as a citizen.
Have you, it was all donated, Robin. It was all donated. We didn't spend a dime on it, until recently. Until recently, we, no, it was all donated.
Okay.
So I spent, the last two years, I gave weekends, so did several other people. So it was all donated. Label, to me, that was a community effort. We had several on this council who also contributed a lot of time and labor.
But we're not done spending money on the building.
Well, have you gone to see it?
No, I've seen a picture of it. I thought it was almost about the...
Okay, no, I mean, it's almo, it's almo, it would say it's about 95% done. So we're gonna have a value to the asset of the town for $252,000 an asset, and it's only gonna cost us less than $22,000 probably. So that's a good, that's a good value. That's what I'm saying. The value to the town, we have assets as a town of $252,000, and we've only had to put forth as a town less than $22,000. That's a good value.
But we still have more to put in, because we've got to put in parking.
But it's not very much. We are about 95% done. Okay, your time, the time went off, I'm sorry. Okay, so... Okay, I, I am doing, I am doing a, a lot of work for no, a lot of work. And if you want to come help, you're welcome to. It's a lot of work, guys. So I'm having to, I'm having to pay people to work my feed stores so I can work for the town for free, and that's because I care. And so when you make accusations like that, that, that's unfounded. I'm giving of my life for this town, and I'm trying to do so because I care. It was a choice. It absolutely was, and I don't regret it. But when you say things like that, that is not founded. All right, so back to budget. Was there anybody else? Okay, Robin, Tracy Hibs. Chad McFarland.
Chad McFarland, 19850, FM 986. One thing I didn't hear discussed on the income side of the budget was what you're projecting on sales tax revenue. Are y'all still projecting the amount based on $500,000 a month in sales, which I believe is $7,500 a month?
So, so we have $45,000 as a total number for six months.
So that's, uh, what's, that's $7,500 a month. That's half a million dollars a month in sales that you're projecting. I've seen the list of businesses. Y'all are being wildly optimistic. And if I'm wrong, six months from now, or whenever you guys get the first check, I will stand up here and admit that I'm wrong. But I think you're probably double, you're estimating double what you're actually gonna get, so...
You said you have a list?
I, I received the list of businesses from an open records request. It was a spreadsheet, and then it was broken down, and it was highlighted the businesses that were located in the city of Poetry. Some of those, well, three of those businesses were mine, and...
So there were, I think, on that list, there were about 30 businesses, 30 something, over 30 businesses, but a lot of them are just, like you said, there might be some, I think, or ranches on there. So, but it is up to the comptroller. It is an unknown.
Yeah, no, and I get that. I get that it is an unknown, but you have the electrician, Lumpy's Electric, if they're doing it right, sales taxes, they're, if they're collecting sales tax on their jobs, it's due where the job is completed.
Point of sale. It's point of sale, correct?
Yeah, it's where the, where the sale is made. I'm very familiar with that. When I was, had my Snap-on franchise, I collected and remitted sales tax to eight different taxing authorities based on where I was selling the tools. Same way with my shaved ice business. I've got two, two of those permits are listing my house as the address, but you're not gonna get any sales taxes. I'm not selling shaved ice out here. The sales tax is due where the sale is made. So again, and I've heard this town being compared to Talty, you know, they've got retail shops along an interstate. We don't have that, so... I haven't seen the rest of the numbers, because the paper, there weren't enough papers here, but I think you're being wildly optimistic on your income from sales tax.
So Tal, thank you. So Talty has, I just saw the recent numbers, sales and use taxes at like 15% in Kaufman County. That was in the Herald Tribune. So Talty is around $205,000 per year in sales and use income. We have a, we actually have their budget.
And they've got a, they've got a Sonic, they've got a Golden Chicken, they've got an Exxon, they've got a Family Dollar right along Interstate 20.
That is true. Okay, so we do have the Springs Event Center, we do have the Feed Store, which we do have Lumpy's Electric, we do have PDQ Fence.
PDQ Fence, Building Fences in Poetry, is Lumpy's Electric doing electric jobs in Poetry, and no offense, your school, I would, I would guess the majority of your business is ag taxes now.
A lot of it is, not all of it.
So it won't be public record later. Can you tell us about how much you think we could collect from Portry Tac and Ag?
I've already said it, $500 to $600 a month.
$500 or $600 a month? Because I consider your business one of the bigger ones besides Tim and Rose, maybe?
Tim and Rose Smith's business.
And then Portry Springs. Yeah, I mean, that kind of, so $500 or $600 a month, I mean...
I mean, that's something. Let me double-check these, this number, but I mean, if we were estimating, what?
$45,000?
$45,000. Isn't that something like...
If we do not vote on this tonight, do we, are we facing any kind of legal ramifications, anything that...
We're supposed to have it done by the end of the year?
I think it's...
I guess I'm struggling with it, because I didn't...
Double-checking the math, but I think it's $3 million in sales we need annually.
So, I mean, there's been three, three issues, or... Okay, so you understand that, you understand my predicament?
I, I 100% understand your predicament. I also understand that this is kind of a trend.
I understand yours, too.
So I don't like voting on something that I haven't had time to consider, you know, and I know we, we just looked over it.
Well, I guess we can have another meeting Friday night.
Yeah, I would really prefer not to, but...
Well, look, look, so the whole FEC thing was kind of, we had asked for it earlier, and we didn't get any information until yesterday, and we're doing the best we can. You know, we are understaffed.
You told Tracy that you thought y'all sent that out. When did y'all think y'all sent this out?
So I didn't, I, so I didn't even get to work on it until like 8:30 last night. So, and it, and I remember I had to do a spreadsheet to figure out what our projected income is now that we don't have the income that we thought we had. So I worked on it last night from 8:30 to about 10:30, and then came in again and started working on it. I was waiting for the attorney's invoice so I could plug it in. So, so there's only been, so there's been the use of prior year excess, the $29,000, which we didn't, I did do my due diligence and contact the municipal accountant. And the only other thing that changed, actually, besides that, was our, our revenue, which we knew from FEC that that will be less now. So, but everything else, there, like I said, I mentioned that I changed the survey mapping and engineering to, well, it said survey map, or survey and engineering, I changed it to mapping, so the changes are in bold.
Do you believe this town will generate $3 million in taxable sales this year?
I can't hear you.
Do you believe this town will generate $3 million in taxable sales this year? That's what $45,000 equates to.
That is what it equates to.
I don't, that are delivered in this town. If that's the rule, and that makes sense.
Well, I know that, so other city secretaries have told me that they currently do receive funding from the Amazon sales within their area.
I thought we was already told by Talty that that was not happening anymore, because Talty, remember, they're... I don't know, I'm just asking council if, if y'all feel comfortable leaving that 40. I don't feel like we'll do $3 million in taxable sales in the city.
Well, then you, okay, then you need to, that's why we're here.
I don't feel comfortable if that's in a six-month period.
I mean, that, that number has been there from the very first budget. That one hasn't changed. So if that's your issue, then that was something that we talked about two months, three months.
What happened in line or not?
Our first swag at it, so...
I mean, we're doing our due diligence here, going back over it again and again, because you do catch things the second and the third pass.
Well, and I think that, we have to be careful, too, because the six-month, I think, is optimistic. That's if the comptroller fast-tracks us through, which they've said they would do, because the election didn't till November, and then they have to process everything. So I think we're, we're right on the line on the, hoping to get six months' worth out of it.
Anybody have a crystal ball? They want to see the future?
No, but I would feel more comfortable, if it was 3 million a year, I think... No, but I would feel more comfortable, if it was three million a year, I think that might could do it, but the truth is, we're working with six months, so I might chop that in half if we're trying to get as close estimate as we can. Because I don't think we're, I don't think anybody here thinks we're going to get six million.
No, I wouldn't.
Well, look, it only affects one item, and that's the road repair. So whatever it is, it doesn't affect the rest of the budget. Just take it, if you're going to cut that up into forty-five thousand, you cut that in the road repair of, of forty-five thousand, so it's a wash, but it doesn't affect the rest of the budget.
Well, and I actually, um.
Is that the only place it can be used?
So if you want to change that, are you saying you want to change that? If you change that to twenty-five thousand and take, uh, twenty thousand out of that, then we, I mean, and you want to take twenty thousand, maybe we split the difference, take ten off of, um, the savings for road refreshment and ten off of, um.
Road repair. That's where it comes, it's directly past where it goes.
The sales and use tax can only be used for road repair.
Oh, that's right, that's right. So it has to come from there, so. Yeah, but doesn't it say that if we say we don't spend forty thousand in legal fees that we can't put some of that money into road repair? I would much rather do that. And the way, anyway, we'll be discussing that later.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'd, I'd go even further than Simeon. I'd say like fifteen thousand, and if we exceed that, we get more money for the roads. We look like geniuses, but if we say forty-five and we get fifteen, we're going to look like idiots.
So if we say twenty, twenty-five thousand, twenty, twenty-five thousand, what do you think?
Twenty, probably pushing it, but, I mean, we just don't know. We don't have any, we, we have no idea who's selling stuff out here. We know the companies, but again, if their business is all.
I don't even think we know all the companies.
No.
Yeah, I don't know, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think we're going to hit that level of sales, but I also don't think that we, we know all the companies.
No, and it's going to be interesting to see what the comptroller thinks is out here because they're going to give us their view.
Even the smallest town in the, that was printed in the newspaper, I mean, even the smallest towns were making, hitting a hundred thousand.
Okay, geographically, where are they? Are they on an interstate?
They're in Kaufman, well, I mean.
Tac and Ag is our biggest one, and it's five hundred dollars a month, so that's.
Well, I don't know that we're your biggest one. I think that Springs would qualify as a bigger, but.
Yeah, maybe.
Unless it's in the back building. Unless it's in the back building, and then it won't collect sales tax for us.
Well, they keep pretty busy on both of them. They keep really busy on both of them.
Yeah, I don't know, it'd be interesting to find out. I don't know if they'd share that, so that would help our projection a lot since that's a heavy.
So what does council want to do? Do you want to go to twenty-five, twenty thousand, twenty-five?
Not twenty-five. I would lean more towards twenty. But I think.
I vote for fifteen, but.
I like fifteen. I think, I think, uh.
Low-ball it and break the record, yeah.
Okay, I could get beyond that. I don't know what a wedding costs at Portry Springs, but if it generated five-hundred thousand dollars in sales, that's seventy-five hundred dollars in taxes.
They, um, I know that they are busy several days a week, and they're, they're eighty-five hundred dollars on weekends.
You said smart and get married in the same sentence, so that disqualifies you.
Hey, your wife is in here, Terry.
She's sleeping.
You'll pay for that later, I'm sure.
Use, use your inside voice. Okay.
We have been, go ahead.
I wouldn't tell. I wouldn't tell the council my business personally.
All right, so, council?
Well, I say we just go with the fifteen. That seems like the most conservative.
And then go at fifteen on road repair, too?
Yep.
I mean, there's nothing else to be done, really.
I'd go along with that.
So then if we have an overage, then we just, it's a bonus because that'll, that'll supply us with enough for pothole repair and cleanup, and then we'll have a savings of three thousand dollars if that number is more than we anticipate. And as businesses grow, um, then we'll have more, um, income for that. And as, um, if, if we have lesser expenses on other things through the year, then we can e, also contribute to, to the road repair if we so choose. Okay, so any other comments on, on this? Because like I said, the only, um, other cha, like I said, if you want to change the revenue, the self-tax revenue, everything else was pretty straightforward on, on that. Okay, do we have a motion?
Well, why not? Well, I make a motion to approve the Town of Poetry proposed budget number five as amended for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion made by White and seconded by Anderson to approve the discussed amendments to budget number five, operating budget number five, to reduce sales and, uh, tax revenue to only fifteen thousand in a conservative view, and thus re, reducing the road repair and maintenance to also fifteen thousand. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously.
You know, just as a point of order turn, I know it's a bit redundant, but it seems like for a year and a half, and I'm not pushing this all on you, it's on the council, too, because we're working together, but it just seems like we, we still aren't doing a good job of getting ahead of the wave. You know, I feel like every meeting, we're sort of being swamped by, I don't know.
You remember that this meeting was called, um, so we had last week, we just had a meeting. So when you're saying we have to have another meeting within a week, that is stretching it for, for Teresa and myself. It's stretching it anyway, and then you add in that whole FEC, um, legal team, and then the fact that we don't have invoices from our legal team. So it, it was a real stretch anyway to even put this together. So if you had preferred, I could not change it, and then we could change it in front of you.
Well, we only asked for three items to be moved, a special meeting, if, if we want to be technical.
Well, so one of my suggestions, and this is out of order, and they can call me on it if they want, I would encourage us to seriously consider the online discussion board that councils can use because if we could talk.
Yes.
Every day, and citizens could witness the discussion because it's public record, we could come into these meetings, I think, a lot better organized and a lot less surprised, so.
Okay, that costs money, and that takes time.
Well, I know, and I think Simeon and I discussed it last time. It's, it's only like a hundred dollars a month or something. It's, it's inexpensive. There's a company that makes it, and it just has to be one click off your front page. City of Austin, there's a number of cities that do it, and we can have meetings nonstop.
All right, let's bring that, okay, it's really off point, but I do appreciate it, and I think it's a good point. So let's bring that up for next agenda, okay? Next, next meeting.
Simeon, can you finish researching that?
I mean, you guys have talked about it, but I haven't seen an agenda item on that particular topic, so.
Put it on there, we'll give it.
All right, well, all right, so we have general public comments?
You know what? No, I got that one, too. Your secretary today, because I'm pretty sure someone.
Anybody, anybody?
All right, Shelley Smith?
Oh, yeah.
Did you say no thanks? Okay, Patrick?
Robin, follow, one-zero-six-five-eight, County Road twenty-four hundred. So earlier, it's not that, I know you do a lot, you work hard. What I meant by that's why there's no trust is because, just like how he said, having it a little more organized, so when the citizens ask a question or make a comment, that it's not just being brushed off. Being transparent with the, with the citizens is what's going to make them feel like they can trust y'all. That, I mean, I know that Mr. White, we've talked about this, and he knows exactly where I'm coming from on this. If you want people to be not so, just feeling like you're being attacked all the time, if you would just be more transparent and hear people out, and when they ask for things, give them to them because it's part of the Open Records Act, or Public Information Act, but I mean, we know that you put a lot of time into it. That's not question, I mean, that's not question, we know you do that. But when people are trying to figure out things with the budget and the money and stuff from contractors, I mean, that's what they want to see in here. That's what shows them that you care, is when you hear and you can come back with something that you can show them. When you just say, oh, I didn't have time and all that.
So we spent, um, five hundred dollars in ink alone last month on copies. So we are trying, I mean, so, um, for the ink and the paper, I mean, just, we're trying. Okay, so we're, we're really over, a little bit overwhelmed when you have back-to-back meetings. So I do, I, I know, I hear what you're saying. I do hear what you're saying. And it, and I do appreciate, Councilmember Anderson has been trying to step up to help because it is a lot of work. You know, a lot of cities have a city manager because it is a lot of work. I, I never imagined it would be this much work. So we just have a part-time secretary, and she's only here, you know, fourteen hours a week. And so when you have a meeting that takes up five of that, it's a lot. And so we are trying, and I understand, I do understand that we want to see everything. Um, we're trying, we're really trying.
I really think you need to look into what he's suggesting about this online thing. I think that would help so much. Meetings wouldn't be as long. You wouldn't have to try to pack on so many things on one agenda. And I think it would be so much easier on y'all and then us also. But, I mean, something's got to give because every meeting, it's like, you know, an attack, and they last forever. And it's, it's the only chance we get to talk to y'all, too. We had that, we could definitely get a lot more of it out, and then, you know.
I'm open, I'm open to that. Okay, I think it's a good suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Tracy Hibbs? Chad McFarland? Kevin Sinkovich? Mike Griffin? Mandy West, she's already gone, okay. Time is ten fifty-three, meeting adjourned.